Good morning and welcome. It is Monday, the... Did I say good morning? Oh my gosh. Good evening and welcome. That's just to warm up the crowd a little bit, I guess, this evening. This is May 23rd, 2022. Planning Commission. At 6:30, I called over the tonight's meeting. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and virtually by using Zoom. As Chair, I'll be leading the Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join us via online Zoom, and if attendees experience audio problems while on Zoom, we suggest you leave the meeting and rejoin again. That usually fixes the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate and so much more information are all posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov, all on the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, please do so by sending an email to city staff, or you can send us a letter right here at City Hall. You may participate in the meeting if you're not here by joining us on zoom.us/join. You would type the meeting ID 960-5678-6876. Once you're logged on to the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you would like to speak to. Again, if you didn't get a pencil and time for me to give you those numbers, all that information is online at burnsvillemn.gov. On the public meeting calendar, you can also join us by calling in at 651-372-8299. Again, the meeting ID is 960-5678-6876. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when callers can speak to that item, give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until then, and I'll give you more information on how to unmute yourself when we get to that portion of the meeting. So also note that there's going to be a slight day delay between the technologies, so if you're joining us by phone, please turn down your TV or your computer or wherever you watch our meeting from. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. Tonight's agenda looks like it has two public hearings and some updates. Do I have a motion on the agenda? Or any changes to the agenda? Commissioners? Any changes to staff?
No changes from staff.
All right, with that, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Timmerman. Commissioner Braddock? Second. Second by Commissioner Braddock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we're looking for the meeting on our minutes from May the 9th. In our last meeting, there should have been included in your packets. Any changes to the minutes that you've read? Commissioners? Any changes to staff?
No, we have no changes.
With that, I'd be looking for a motion. Commissioner Anderson?
I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Timmerman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it is approved. That takes us to number three on the agenda, and that is a public hearing. We have an application of Scott Hemenway of the Geneva Suites for variance for reasonable accommodations to allow a residential dwelling or group home as defined and licensed by the state of Minnesota to accommodate 10 persons as opposed to the six people permitted by city code in an existing single-family home located at 3108 Fox Point Circle. Here to present is one of our city planners, Sarah Madden. As Madden, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, and Commissioners. So as stated, this evening, we do have a hearing application for a variance related to a residential group home facility proposed here in the city of Burnsville. So as an overview, we'll put a clicks there. Overview, so the Geneva Suites is an organization that currently does operate these types of facilities throughout the metropolitan area. There are two existing locations within the city of Burnsville for a residential group home that primarily does care for seniors. So often, that does include, you know, it's 24-hour care within the homes at these that are within single-family neighborhoods. So the applicant is interested in operating a new senior care residential home at 3108 Fox Point Circle. So the request that's before us as part of a variance is a reasonable accommodation request for up to 10 residents as opposed to the six that would be permitted under city code and by state statute. So the subject site itself is a 1.18 acre property. It is zoned R1, one-family residential, and guided, and the comprehensive land use plan is low-density residential. The home itself, adjoining properties are all the same zoning and land use. You'll see the north boundary here. There's a kind of a wooded area as part of a longer parcel of land that is city park land that does bound it to the north. So the existing home itself is approximately just over 5,000 square feet and a four-bedroom, four-bathroom, one-story dwelling with a basement. So there are plans attached to your background report that are conceptual at this time for what the remodel may look like when it does come forward to the building permit process after receiving any type of land use approval. So the applicant has indicated that the home is large enough in size and can accommodate 10 residents. So these concept floor plans shown here, this would be the lower level, the basement level, which would show that remodel to create these 10 bedrooms, four and a half bathrooms, to have that shared open living space. There would be the inclusion of an elevator and a ramp. So on this next slide here, conceptual, again, these preliminary plans that they would have for the main level of the home in the event that the land use approval was received. So just some zoning and land use considerations. A residential group home or offhand housing with services, they are allowed by state statute and single-family zoning districts. The state would consider that type of use. It is residents within the home primarily residential use. They do receive 24-hour care from, and that's why they have the state licensure, is they do receive that 24-hour care from, it can depend whether it's human services or the health department. But so city code definitions of family do include a group home as defined and licensed by the state of Minnesota for six or fewer persons, so that's reflected from the state statutory language. Seven to 16 persons can be allowed by a conditional use permit in multifamily residential districts. In this case, though, this is a single-family home existing in a single-family zoning district, and again, that request is to increase the number of those residents. So there are some city policies kind of on the books within our comprehensive plan that have goals that may align with this type of requests, so that includes promoting additional varieties of housing types to accommodate all life cycles of Burnsville residents and just to increase the diversity of senior housing options. And again, that relates to all level of services and types and accessibility considerations. City Council did review this use in concept at the April 5th regular city council meeting, so there was discussion on this use as a whole with the applicant kind of requesting it be discussed at that city council meeting. So at that time, the city attorney did weigh in on conceptually what the process would be if somebody were to request something like this, and the direction was that it would be a variance application. At that meeting, there was a majority consensus in support for this type of use at that meeting from the members of the city council. So as we kind of move forward with staff review of this, we did ask that the applicant host a neighborhood meeting, which they did earlier this month at their office. At the meeting, the Geneva Suites generally described their business operations and changes that they would be making to the property. Some of the comments from the neighborhood meeting are included in the planning considerations section of your staff report. So there was discussion about some possible tree removal related to just general occupying of the property and that they needed to come down, some discussion about the ramp, parking, the number of staff at the site, things like that. So seven neighbors did attend the meeting. Generally, feedback was that they would be potentially welcoming to the use at that meeting. So variance considerations related to the review and recommendation here this evening. So the variance that's requested from the city code is to allow that proposed residential group home to accommodate the 10 residents as an increase from the six residents permitted. Staff completed the variance guideline policy and indicated that there were eight positive, six negative, and five non-applicable measures within the policy. The city attorney did review the application materials and provided a comment letter, which is included in your background report. Some key points from that attorney memo that you have is that in as part of our evaluation for reasonableness, we're looking at the accommodation of residents with disabilities and whether there is an enhancement of quality of life for residents. Overall, with the proposal, staff does find it reasonable and is supportive of the request this evening. So the recommendation before you this evening is that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the variance request for the reasonable accommodation to allow the residential dwelling group home to accommodate 10 persons as opposed to the six persons permitted by right. So as presented, so this is a hearing this evening. The variance process is a little different from some of the other straightforward land use applications, so it's not a public hearing, but it is a hearing this evening, so it would still proceed as normal with residents able to provide comments, and we would record those comments. So I can stand for any questions if necessary. Other than that, the floor is yours, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for correcting me, too.
Always.
Yeah. Otherwise, you know, I'd go wild, crazy. Well, Commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff? Commissioner Anderson?
I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned that they already have two other homes like this in the city. Did they also get variances, or are they set up a little bit different?
That's a great question. So the two, their operations currently within the city are under the just permitted by right of the six persons, and I can't remember the two neighborhoods right now, but they do have two specifically within the city right now that are operating with six residents each.
Perfect, thanks. Can you repeat the question, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just asking if, if she had mentioned that there were two other buildings that they already had, and I wanted to know if they needed a variance for those two, and they did not because they are within the limit of only six people living in each home.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman?
Commissioner Justin?
Yeah.
I was looking at the property tax records, and I'm curious if you can tell us a little history about the transactions with this home over the last five years?
We can defer that question to the applicant at a later time, so they are available this evening to answer questions.
Thank you.
Well, that's a great segue. If the applicant is here, I would love to have them come up to the lectern if you wouldn't mind. And for the record, we just need your name and address.
Scott Hemenway, 27 Geneva Boulevard in Burnsville.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes. I believe the question was what previous ownership of the home?
Sales history and tax records. I would just like a five-year history.
To the best of my knowledge, the home has been owned by the previous owner for quite a number of years, more than five. So I guess I would have to look at the tax records myself.
I'll save the question. Maybe somebody else can answer the question better.
Okay. Thank you. Anything you want to add to the application, changes that you discussed in the meeting that you had with the neighbors? Are you changing the foundations at all or of the size of the building?
No, the size of the home will remain the same.
Okay.
And it was mentioned that there's a tree that was, that we needed to take down because of a disease, but other than that, we, other than keeping up the landscaping around the home, there's really no other major modifications to the outside of the home, other than possibly a ramp.
Okay. And what's the reason behind having 10 over six need to increase the size of the home?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, you mentioned that we have two other locations, and we do. They're not large enough to accommodate 10 residents. This home is quite large, and we've found that over the years that when we have people in the homes, they really enjoy the camaraderie, they enjoy the other people in the homes, and, but we want to maintain that small feel as well, and so we don't want to be a large facility, never have. That's never been the vision. We want to remain small. On the same token, the house is large enough to have that many rooms, and they're all private rooms. So we don't, we don't have multiple people in one room, but yeah, no, it's, the residents really enjoy having other people in the home, and so that's the reason why. And it's just, it's a really large house.
This could be like an episode of Golden Girls. Is that what we're looking at here?
Sure.
Are we talking married couples in some cases, or is it?
Typically not.
Okay.
Yeah, typically not. Yeah, very, very seldom. And generally speaking, when there's a married couple that might come to us, one person really doesn't need a lot of care, but the other person does, and it's not the right fit for our house. So people that come to our homes need 24-hour care. They need a lot of care. Yep, whether it's dementia, Parkinson's. So they either have a physical disability or a mental disability or both. So, and when I say mental disability, might be Alzheimer's, that sort of thing. Yep.
Do you usually have a lot of guests come to the home? A lot of traffic or anything of those lines in some of your other homes?
Typically, we'll have maybe one to two visitors throughout the day, and they need to be scheduled when they come to our house. But, you know, it's interesting, whether it's assisted living facility or our type of homes, there's not, unfortunately, there's not a ton of people, not a ton of family members that come to the homes. And there's a number of people that we have in our homes that don't even have family in the cities. They have family outstayed. So we do a lot of video conferencing as well in the homes, but do we have guests that show up once in a while? Yes, we do. But typically, it's, on any given day, it might be one or two people that'll show up throughout the entire day. Every once in a while, kind of like in any normal home, there might be a birthday party. So it might be a few people that'll show up or something like that because we like to celebrate people's birthdays. But in generally speaking, when it comes time for holidays, some people will stay in the home. Other times, other instances, family will come and get their loved one and bring them to their house. So, but in general, it's really no more than an average family in a neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Anderson?
I'm just wondering, how many staff do you usually have working at a time for a home of that size?
So we like to keep nice staffing ratios. That's why people like to keep their loved ones in our homes. In larger assisted living facilities, you'll see one staff member per 10, 15, sometimes 20 residents. In our home, in this particular home, we'd have during the daytime anywhere from two to three staff members in the home, and at nighttime, one to two people that would be awake. So our employees don't sleep in the homes. So, yeah.
And with that, and with the, you know, one or two guests per day, none of the neighbors, when you were speaking to them, had any issues with worrying about parking or anything like that, right?
I think, you know, until you actually see the results, there's always an apprehension, possibly some anxiety, but that is what we've experienced. We've been around for quite a number of years now, and that's on average what we experience in all of our homes.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I have a few questions back to the finances related to this. Where do you fit in this and who is the owner and is the owner of the property here tonight?
Sure. So.
I'm here, too.
Yep. So, yeah, you can reduce yourself.
We're just going to have to ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Matt Hanley, and I live at 2701 Monterey Avenue in St. Louis Park.
Perfect, thank you.
So I'm business partners with Scott, and we are co-owners in the home as well. So we've set up two LLCs. One is the Geneva Suites. One is the owner of the home for legal reasons.
Okay, so maybe you can answer my question. How long have you owned the home and under what business structures? Because when I'm looking at the sales records and the tax records, it looks like there's been some filings over the last few years, and I'm trying to get an understanding of what that is, maybe in the last five years.
Right. So we purchased the home under the LLCs, Fox Point LLC, approximately a year ago. I did see mail come to the home, so I, like Scott, we were told it was the previous owner had lived and owned it and lived there for, since around 1980, was the original builder, was a CFO for a builder who built the whole neighborhood. That's what we were told by the neighborhood. So I'm not sure how accurate that is, but I believe it to be true. I did notice in the mail that I was receiving utility bills to an LLC, and so my suspicion was when that owner, who we do also know, moved up north and is being cared for by loved ones, at least last I spoke to the, when we bought it a year ago, that's what we were told by the realtor, when that person became disabled, they likely did some work with the estate and transitioned it into an LLC, because I did see some utility bills coming to an LLC of some sort that was in ownership or running the home, but I, we bought it from what we presumed to be the original owner.
Okay.
That's all I know.
Okay. So when you purchased it, did you have the intentions of turning it into this group home?
Yes.
Okay. And are you a doctor or a nurse?
I am not.
And is your partner a doctor or a nurse?
No.
Okay. I'm curious, what is it of the interest to you to build a group home at this proper, at this property?
Like I said, we're in business running group homes, so that is a business that we've been doing. Scott has been in this business for, going on 20 years now, and I've been doing it for three years now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming in. With that, it is now 6:50. This is a hearing, correct?
Correct.
And I will open up that to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak to this issue may come up to the lectern and state their name and address for the record. If we have anybody on, joining us by Zoom that wants to speak to this issue or on the phone, you can hit star six to speak with the moderator. If you're on Zoom, you just can chat, you use the chat feature to speak with the moderator, and they will let you know what to speak. And it looks like we have somebody at the podium. Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. Linda Kramer, K-R-A-E-M-E-R, and I live at 3001 Chandler Court in Burnsville. And the reason I'm here is I'm also a nurse. I have absolutely no concern about group homes. I'm a very big supporter of them. I have a younger sister that's disabled that lives in a group home in a residential area. I have found it to be good for her as well as the community around them. They're very supportive. So really, I just want to ask one question. I understand the parking issue with just staff isn't going to be a problem, but I'm curious as if they will have support services in as well, such as physical therapy, social work, I don't know, mental health providers, OTPT. And the cul-de-sac is actually a bit smaller than the one that I live on, so I don't know where those people would park. And my question is, is the rationale for granting the variance for a 40% increase in residents solely financially based on the cost of the property? So I'll sit down while that's, yeah.
Good, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this issue?
Can I say something just while you're waiting for them to come up? Ms. Kramer, we're not going to specifically respond to questions, but after we hear everybody, we will speak to them. So I'm taking a lot of notes, and we'll make sure to either answer those questions or seek guidance from staff on those.
Joel Porsel, 3112 Fox Point Circle. I'm fortunate enough to be the neighbor to 3108, and I, and next month will be my 90th birthday, so I'm probably going to be older than most of my neighbors, but I want to rest assured that I'll be out on the street greeting my six new residents. And I think the neighborhood as a whole would have no problem with this home with the way it was zoned for six people. I don't know if any of the members of your staff here have driven back into the cul-de-sac. I don't know if any of the members of your staff here have driven back into the cul-de-sac where it is. There is originally four homes in this cul-de-sac. And plus, it's got a large center island with a tree in it. So it makes it a little, even as they've been getting some repair work, cutting down this tree and that, the way they parked, they park out, you know, pretty rinky-dinky in a way. And that is my biggest concern, is the parking situation. We've been residents there for 30 something, you were, you want to know about the residency. My wife is, my wife is Jean Pimble. I've been married to her for 30 years, 32 years. And her husband was Pembell. And he developed that whole area in there. Craig Chidham, the owner of 3108, was sort of Craig's partner, I mean Clyde's partner in a lot of ways. And so they both lived in their original homes since they've been built, built there. But, you know, the parking, I've been so delightful with the city of Burnsville Maintenance Crew. You can tell them in the wintertime, I mean, we get the first snowplow of the city. It comes down our street and goes around that circle two, three times. And I just can't picture what's gonna happen. You don't have any parking restrictions. And if the, you know, and I know they say very seldom do we ever have. But what happens when you got four or five visitors there? Where do they park? What do they do? You know, plus the fact that food is delivered three times a day. They have delivered food, they don't cook it there, they deliver it. They must have linen and the maintenance people. So I mean, as much as you want to, you're, you're going from a nice quiet little cul-de-sac where four Burnsville residents for 20, 30, 40 years have lived nice peacefully. Now all of a sudden, you're gonna put 10 new residents next door to us, plus workers, plus deliveries. And that, and like I say, please, please, don't, don't punish us in, in that way after all these years. And six residents, like I say, I'll be in the driveway welcoming them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this issue? Just come on up to the podium. I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, my name is Bill DiAgostino, and I live at 3101 Fox Point Road. I absolutely agree with everything that Joe said, that we as a neighborhood support this use for this residence under the current city ordinance. So I'm here to speak against the variance application. I believe, but I don't know, and I, I was interested when Scott said, see the results. I can tell you, I've seen the results. I'm a retired fire captain and paramedic with the city. I spent 36 years on the streets here. I've been in probably 85% of our group homes. And the scenario is always the same. Garages aren't used for staff parking. Garages are used to store medical equipment, hoier lifts, oxygen, wheelchairs, physical therapy equipment. So staff doesn't park in there. Driveways aren't necessarily utilized for staff parking because we need to get medical transportation, they need to get medical transportation in and out. They have to accommodate RALS ambulances if there is a 911 emergency. So the parking's almost exclusively on the street. Or the solution on 27th Avenue, which I took one picture of on, on a Wednesday morning as I was driving by, there's a group home on 27th and North River Hills. And they simply park on the lawn.
Really?
Yes, I'll show you the picture. That was their solution, because they can't park in the driveway, so they park on the street or they park on the lawn, especially this winter, when the snowbanks were, were fairly large. Plus, they're probably getting tagged for two to sixes anyway during the wintertime. So it's not feasible to park on this cul-de-sac. It's too small. It just won't accommodate staff for 10 people. And sure, as Scott stated, two to three during the day, one to two, I'm not sure about a director for the facility. But you do have skilled nursing, as, as the nurse who came up initially and talked about. You have skilled nursing in and out, you have visitors in and out, you have OT, occupational therapy, you have physical therapy in and out. You have, as Joe said, we have three, they'll have three food deliveries a day. This street is simply too small to accommodate that.
We have your picture in front of us.
Oh, you do, okay.
If you could push it up just a little bit.
Sure.
There we go, thank you.
So the, the black car on my left is parked on the lawn. And there were usually three to four cars parked there all winter long. Plus, you see staff cars on the street, this is Wednesday, their trash can's still out. But it's, it's the parking. One car in the driveway and everyone else on the street are on the lawn. And this, I assume, is a six-person home.
Okay, well, first off, thank you for your service with the city. I really appreciate your fire.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Anderson?
I'm just wondering, with your expertise on this matter, if there were cars parked throughout the cul-de-sac, would a fire truck be able to go around it?
Not in that cul-de-sac, no.
Okay.
And, and on, on critical calls, we're coming with an ambulance and an engine.
Yeah.
And no, there's no way you can get an engine around that cul-de-sac with any cars parked in the cul-de-sac.
Would that always be a requirement that they can get through that circle?
I can't speak to requirement, Commissioner, I, I can't. I mean, from a practical sense, of course, we want to get our apparatus everywhere we can. And if there's traffic there, or if there's cars parked there all the time, we're not going to. So they'll end up trying to back the engine in or park on, on Fox Point Road and walk in. Even the ambulance is gonna be tight on that cul-de-sac. So absolutely, it's gonna hamper access.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Any other residents who would like to? If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, hello, I'm Robert Simmons. I live at 3116 Fox Point Circle, just across the street, the cul-de-sac basically, from the property. I, I think a lot of what's said is, we're in complete agreement with. It's the, we're not really concerned about the type of home that's there and the original permit. I think we're more concerned about parking and traffic on the circle, as been mentioned several times. It is on a cul-de-sac that houses four homes. This expansion would basically add the equivalent of a fifth home there, with all the additional traffic and parking from everything that's been talked about already. So we already see, you know, when we have birthday parties and that kind of stuff, people parking on the streets and causing issues, this is gonna increase the frequency of that dramatically. So that really is our concern, adding the additional load.
And you'd be okay if it was six rather than 10?
I'd rather it was a single-family home, but I can tolerate the six.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? This poor guy has been trying to get up here a couple times.
Hello, my name is Leo Morozic. I live at 3100 Fox Point. I applaud the concept of residential group homes. It's wonderful. I'm an ex-retired ER doc, intercity Minneapolis, and I know what nursing homes are like. And this concept is good. Six is excellent, I, 10 is too much. I'm just gonna reiterate what everybody else says, the cul-de-sac is too small for 10. The, the people coming in and out, the family, I, I, I think, I think there's gonna be more than two or three cars at a time. In addition, there are going to be ambulances, there's going to be medevans coming in. There are kids playing in this cul-de-sac. So I, I can tolerate six, I'm not able to tolerate 10. And, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? We're gonna get them up here yet. You just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Michael Murphy, 3001 Fox Point Road, Burnsville, Minnesota.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
One tiny, tiny complaint. For some reason, we didn't get invited to the meeting that took place, that they said the neighbors were supportive and all that sort of stuff. So as I said, a tiny complaint. I suspect because we live on the other side of Fox Point Road, on the left rather than on the right side. Anyway, I just have one question. So they've stated that the need for parking will be minimal because the residents aren't gonna drive typically. I don't, I don't know if there's a guarantee of that. Maybe they could answer that, maybe they can't. My question is, what's the, what's the future use of this home? Is there anything that says they can't sell it and let another class of clientele move in that would drive cars? And what in the world would happen if that were true? That's my question.
That's a good question, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? We have an age restriction, you have to be over 10, I'm sorry. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mary Cathol. I live at 3004 Fox Point Road. And my property abuts the yard of this Geneva Suites home. And I think, just for the record, I am fully appreciative of the work that Geneva Suites does. And I think it's a wonderful service. But I think that particular location is problematic. Mainly the parking issues. And there is a fire hydrant right next door to there, so some limitation of how close you can be to that. So I do see that, and I've gone to look at other Geneva Suites properties that have six. And they often have four or five cars in the area there. And so I, I think that inevitably, a 10-person situation is going to have serious traffic issues. But my nightmare is, if they can't park on the circle, are they going to try to get access to the backyard and drive up and park in the backyard? Or have roads or access for that? And I think that would seriously undermine the quality of the neighborhood to have that happen. And I think it would have to be accessed either from the park area to come up, up the hill from Hayes, which with the gas line, I don't, I think that's not a, a wise thing. But alongside the house, there's a limited space on either side. I think if you saw where that red triangle, they really have very little ground on either side. But I would like, if you do allow this variance, which I, I think in the future there will be, the city would be approached to allow driving access to the backside. And I, I think I would see that as a sad, sad day. So I think one of my neighbors suggested that if this is a proposal that the company believes in, they can remodel their house to accommodate 10, but stick with the current six-person limit and not get a formal variance that would stay with the house. But if they prove themselves to be, you know, all of our concerns to be unfounded, then, then apply for a variance at a later time, once it's documented that this business operation doesn't impact safety and traffic situation on, on the circle. So I, I'd like to throw that out as a, a potential idea. But if you do do the variance, I would like a proviso within it that they do not degrade the backyard by using it as a parking lot.
Sure, Commissioner Timmerman?
It's Cathol, right?
Thank you. Cathol.
Cathol. Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Were you at the meeting with the?
On the third?
With the neighborhoods, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, could you tell me, just in a nutshell, how that went and how responsive the applicant was to the concerns?
So I, I think they presented their vision of how it would be. And with some kind of rose-colored glasses in the process, I think, for best-case scenario. So I, I think we, we would like to be good neighbors to them. And we would, we would like, you know, having a, a good relationship and support their activities. But we are concerned about some of these issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you so much. Sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is William Harrison. My address is 3000 Fox Point Road. And we have been in our residence, Barbara, my wife and I, since 1983. And we love that area, as you can tell, all of us that have been at this microphone do. And that's not to say we don't welcome new things and, and happenings and neighbors, as is happening, we do. And there's a need for this, as we all agree to. We're just suggesting that, that whoever began, ruled, passed, or, or developed this group home idea, certainly, and the number six had a great idea, I think. And it's my opinion, and obviously those that have been here before, that six is a wonderful number. Whether you're a family or whether you're a group home, it can be cared for, be part of the neighborhood, do good things for everybody, and we all feel very good. We think that making that 10 is just passing the, the idea of good sensible planning into something that should not be. So again, we believe six is fine, we welcome that. And we, we certainly want you to consider that in your, in your thinking. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sir, please feel free to come on up. We'll just ask you to state your name and address for the record, just like everybody else.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Devich. Live at 3009 Fox Point Road, Burnsville, Minnesota. This is deja vu for me. I had spent 42 years in local government. I was an assistant city manager for 25 years, city manager of Richfield for 14 years. Have I dealt with things like this before? Yes, many times. And I think the challenge here that you are looking at, and I think you're hearing from the neighbors, is you're being asked to balance the, the will and the good of the neighborhood. Myself, I'm a 32-year resident of that area, against a request of a business. And I understand, obviously, it's licensed by the state. There's a need for group homes. And I also don't have a problem with the group home being there for six people. You know the fact that the, that it's a big home? I mean, that shouldn't be the threshold question as to whether or not you change from six to 10. I believe the threshold question that you're looking at is that you're gonna balance the rights, the needs, the good of the neighborhood, against the good and the interest of the commercial entity that's there. And, and to that, there's a lot of things that I'm not gonna repeat that my neighbors have already said. You know, the parking issue is one that, that does trouble me. Putting 10 people in a home there does trouble me. You know, and in the end, they're asking for a variance. As you all know, variance is forever with that property. And once you do it, you're not gonna be able to undo it. And I think that to, to come here and to ask for that variance for up to 10 people, before they've even been in that facility, before they've had a proven track record in that neighborhood, is too much to ask. And it's too much to ask of the neighborhood. And so I ask you as a planning commission to think about that. Think about what the folks in the neighborhood have already said. And again, to balance that, balance the good of the neighborhood with the, with the balance of what they're asking for, for a commercial entity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, we appreciate you coming in today. Would anybody else like to speak to this issue? If you could just state your name and address. I have to tell everybody.
Hi, my name is Karen Simmons. I'm Dr. Simmons' wife. I live at 3116 Fox Point Circle. I'm literally living at Chittam's old house. I have seven grandchildren. My neighbor back here, they have three children. I'm speaking for Arthur right now, the little boy who's not old enough. Arthur and his brother and sister will ride their bikes around that circle all summer long. Joel mentioned the snowplows. They plow up in that center circle, the snow really high, and the kids sled down it all winter long. If there's a bunch of cars and a bunch of traffic, we can't have them out there. That, part of the reason, we lived here four years. Part of the reason we moved there was, it was a cul-de-sac. The grandkids can ride. I have a place for them to go down, have a good time. And if there's a bunch of cars and a bunch of traffic, I really can't have them out there. There was a garage sale there this weekend. And I just, the kids went there this weekend luckily. But I just noticed there was a lot of traffic just from a garage sale. You know, what you expect. It's a little heavier, but still, it was just like, you know, a lot of, and it's like, oh, glad the kids aren't here because they couldn't play out there today. But that's really it. I just want you to consider our children, who are trying to play out there. Now they're weaving, and traffic's coming in and out. And get out of the road, and the ball hits a car. We're getting yelled at. There's going to be arguments, you know, they call hit, hit our car. We got a dent. Who takes care of it? You know, things like that. Thanks.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else would like to speak to this issue? I'm seeing no one. From what I understand, there is no one on Zoom. So I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:15. And I'm going to turn to my Commissioners and say, what do you think, guys?
Commissioner Anderson.
I'm just asking a question, Sarah. Just to be 100% clear, if a variance is approved for this location, if they ever sold the house to somebody else, does that, that variance continues always with the house?
Yes, it is tied to the property itself.
Just making 100% sure.
What was the answer, please? Yes, it is tied to the property itself.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I just want, I just want to make sure that we answer a few of the questions that came up. And bear with me, because I also have a few of my own. So 100% of the time that we've seen projects before us, the fire department has weighed in. Can we talk about the fire department's take on this particular project?
So we do, we didn't have a, we don't have a formal review memo that came from the fire department as part of this application. We don't have any outstanding comments on the proposed use of the residential group home and the number of residents. The fire department did review the use in concept in the later addition of the sprinkler system to the building, and was mainly related to the life, health, and safety of the residents of the building, and not related to the traffic impacts of utilizing the existing garage driveway for both the workers and any visitors to the site. So the review did not include a memo of evaluation related to access as much as it did related to the internal building health, life, safety.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Or come back to me. Commissioner Bradock?
And I, my question is a little engineering-related. I understand that the, a parking study is probably not mandatory for this, but did engineering take a look at any of the parking?
Commissioners, the, the information that was provided to us, and the available parking there with the driveway, we didn't see any, any issues or concerns with what was provided to us and what is there currently.
I'm going to ask, so we have, in the city code, we said six residents. What was the purpose behind that? Was it a number that was thrown out there? Do you know?
So the, the language that's in our city code does come from the statutory allowance of a residential group home is considered a single-family home under Minnesota State statute, up to six persons.
Okay.
So that's statutory.
And that's, that's the legal aspect of this. For us to go above and beyond, that's why the variance is obviously required.
That's correct. The state statute would allow a city to go above that number. The six is a, the minimum number for replicating within cities' codes across state. But the city does have the authority to increase that, whether it is within their city code. And then, as stated in the memo from the city attorney, that the variance is the process for any accommodation beyond that for the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I'm going to save a couple of the other questions as rhetorical and speak to them myself in my response. I have a lot of thoughts about this particular project, and I just want to share them with the Commission. I think Mr. Devich hit the nail on the head. This is an incredibly sensitive topic, pitting business and profit against neighbors and residents who have been in the neighborhood for a long period of time. And I think that this is probably one of the most articulate groups of people that we've seen in front of our Commission. Anybody who's been in front of our Commission before, I apologize. But you guys, I mean, you're, you're, you know, great professionals. You're doctors. You are nurses. You are fire chiefs. You are folks who have had long careers at neighboring cities. I'm just really impressed by the, the wealth of knowledge and experience that you guys have brought in front of us. And that's just amazing to get the insight that you have. Not a single one of you said, we don't think a group home is a good idea. Not a single one of you said, you know, we have real concerns that allowing six people wouldn't meet the needs of some of our aging and disabled residents, that we all want to care for. What I get the sense of, though, is that there's this fine line between caring for others and putting profit in front of that care as a primary focus. And so, back to Ms. Kramer's initial question, is the rationale based on the cost of the property? In my mind, absolutely it is. And I think that allowing this variance, even after reading the city attorney's, I don't know how many pages, because, well, frankly, it's long. After reading the city attorney's memo, I disagree with the city attorney. I think the city attorney does not, in, in this memo, does not dictate what the city needs to do, which is what a good city attorney would do. And I appreciate that. But they do lean towards the city approving this because of the concern that we are not making an accommodation for the potential residents of the group home, and that we may need to rely heavily on the variance application, which eight to six on a variance application, I mean, it turns subjective matters into an objective number, but it's still individually subjective matters. I don't think eight to six is a black and white answer. We're still kind of in that balance. So for all of those reasons, I do not support this. I think that six is reasonable. I think that we need to welcome group homes into our neighborhoods. I really appreciate the professionalism you all showed, and understanding of the fact that we need to care for our most vulnerable residents, but not at the sake of business profit. So I will be voting against the variance.
Commissioner Anderson.
Has the city ever approved a variance for 10 residents in any other locations?
So that's a good question. There is an existing residential group home facility within the city that received a reasonable accommodation variance a few years ago for eight residents, for a similar, similar type of use in a different area of the city.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? I was just way in that I agree with what Commissioner Timmerman was saying. I really appreciate you guys coming in. I think that it shows a lot about a, a city when the residents come in and feel comfortable coming to, tell, tell us how you feel about a certain subject, because otherwise, we really don't know. And I think that, that really does mean a lot. And I really appreciate what, just going off what Commissioner Timmerman said, the professionalism used, and your willingness to allow something like this to come in. I know, it's, it's not the greatest thing in the world, but it could be much worse coming into the neighborhood, obviously. I mean, we've seen some things. However, and I have to say, when I was out, you, you have a beautiful view out there. Holy cow. I can't, I can't fault anyone for wanting to live out there. I really appreciate the conversation. So thank you for coming in tonight. I do agree with what Ms. Kramer had stated, and what Commissioner Timmerman alluded to with, as far as finances being a part of this, with having the extended 10 residents. The, the speaking about the, the cul-de-sac, small area, cars maybe getting in the way, yeah, the pictures, you guys really did your homework this time, and really showed, showed well what, what your arguments are. Now, we're, we're a body that makes recommendations to the city council. So our, our opinion here, what we do, is going to give a recommendation to the city council. If we go 100% unanimous, this issue will go on what's called the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a, a list of items that were vetted through the different commissions. And the city council can approve them all at once, or they can pull one off. If one of us does not go with the rest of the group, so if someone, it's not an unanimous vote, say the vote is three to one tonight, that automatically becomes a regular item on the council's agenda, which means the council will be speaking on that issue, and having the conversations, and a public hearing. So you would all have the opportunity to, to address the council as well. And that might be the best outcome you have. And the last time you guys visited us, which was, I think, last year or two years ago, we, we had the same thing happen. We, I voted against it, and it went before the council to have comments heard. If that does occur, I do recommend going in and speaking with the council. They're going to have the final say on this. What we vote tonight is just going to be a recommendation, like I said. That being said, I think it is important that you do come see us as well. I really appreciate your thoughts and your concerns. With that, I'm looking over to my Commissioners. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Anderson.
I would like to make a motion that, that we recommend to the city council approval of the variance request for reasonable accommodation to allow a residential dwelling group home, as defined and licensed by the state of Minnesota, to accommodate 10 persons as opposed to the six persons permitted by city code in an existing single-family home.
All right. Commissioner Anderson's made a motion. Do I have a second?
We might need some Roberts, Roberts rules. Do we have to have the motion withdrawn?
No, the motion will just fail if it does not receive a second.
Okay. And then do we leave it at that, or do we make a motion to deny the variance?
You would make another motion to deny.
We could also make another recommendation as well. It doesn't have to be exactly as stated from staff. Would you like to try again, Commissioner Anderson?
You can withdraw.
Oh, I was going to withdraw.
No, I, I will. I mean, if that's the, the goal here, then I will withdraw and resubmit a new one.
Would you like somebody else to resubmit it?
You're welcome to as well.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I would make a motion to deny the variance as presented.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Timmerman. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradock?
I second the motion.
Okay. A motion's been made to deny the variance, like Commissioner Timmerman, or recommend to city council to deny the variance. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bradock. All in favor of Commissioner Timmerman's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, it is unanimous. So we'll end up on the consent agenda. However, if the Commissioner, the city council does decide to pull it off the agenda, they can do that, and you can speak to the issue. If you guys show up, I'm sure somebody will pull it off for you. So thank you for coming in tonight. And we'll move on to the next item on our.
So that'll be, so that'll be June 7th at 5:30 PM.
June 7th, thank you. I was going to state that.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming.
That brings us to number four on our agenda. It's a public hearing for the application of Emulsion East States LLC for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage of BIFs, otherwise known as portable restrooms, and to allow slats within a chain-link fence for the construction of a new outdoor storage lot in 13,600 square-foot office warehouse building located at 12547 DuPont Avenue South. Again, presenting is our city planner, Sarah Madden. Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. So this next item that we have this evening is related to a new development on a vacant property here in the city of Burnsville. So the site here on the corner of DuPont and Lady Bird, as said, it's a vacant used property encumbered by overhead power easements. And you can see in the aerial photos that there's existing, possibly parking or storage on this property. There are no existing land use approvals for outdoor storage on the site, but that is what's under review for this evening would be an outdoor storage approval, as well as slats within chain-link fencing, which is a conditional use under the zoning ordinance in commercial and industrial districts. And so the subject site is zoned B4 highway commercial district. It is within the Gateway Overlay District related to the Minnesota River Quadrant. And so it is guided MRQ Minnesota River Quadrant in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And so the properties north and northeast of the site are also within that Gateway Overlay District, but are zoned separately in the Gateway Industrial Medium District. And then the properties south and southwest are zoned B4 highway commercial. And again, all of the adjacent properties are zoned as Minnesota River Quadrant. And that does include the overall industrial area up to the river, including some of our heavy industrial sites, such as the quarry site and things like that, or the sites up until the quarry. So shown here is an existing condition survey of the property. As stated, there is overlaid, overhead power transmission line that does encumber the site. The site itself is a platted lot of record, and has been existing an industrial plat since 1969. So neighboring lots are generally primarily industrial. It's been used that way for the last five decades. So as part of the establishment of the Minnesota River Quadrant, there has been change in the area related to zoning over time from industrial to a lighter industrial and back to commercial. So there have been some changes. The city works with some of those established policies. So I will kind of discuss later the established Gateway District and the design guidelines that go along with that. But generally, this site was part of, as part of those redevelopment efforts and goals within the Comprehensive Plan, a special legislation, tax increment financing district for soil deficiency areas within the Minnesota River Quadrant. So this property was one of several parcels that was originally proposed in 2013 for interim use to do soil remediation and tree removal on a number of properties. Most notably were the several properties in the industrial plat from last year for the two new office warehouse buildings, where they had combined kind of a number of smaller sites into the one larger parcel. The majority of the soil remediation work had been done on that property or those properties. And while this was included in that overall approval, the tree removal and other work that was approved wasn't kind of completed to the same level of development ready. However, we do have a developer that's interested in the site, and again, is proposing to use the site for an outdoor storage component. And there will be a building that is constructed as well on the site for an office warehouse use, which would generally be permitted in that B4 zoning district. So shown here is the, just a proposed site plan of the property. You can see the proposed building here in the southwest corner, and again, that overhead transmission line easement for the proposal. There is the rear area, which would be the storage yard for the proposed portable restroom facility. So shown here is the grading plan. And so shown here is the grading plan. Just one thing to note, there is a boulder retaining wall here in the southern corner of the site. As mentioned in the staff report, there is, this site is proposed to be entirely fenced and along the perimeter of the site, it will join into that boulder retaining wall here on the southern property line and then kind of come back into play on the western side of the building. So it will be completely fenced in, the entirety of gated site gate across the main driveway entrance. Shown here is the landscaping plan for the proposal. So there are, there is a condition which I'll discuss later related to this, which is that the building perimeter landscaping is a few feet shy of meeting the linear feet required for that 50% minimum. So there is a condition related to making some adjustments to the landscaping plan related to that linear feet, or they do have some options for administrative changes within their plan if they did an alternative design feature or landscaping option. So that option is also available to them as they come in for the building permit process. So shown here, just a preliminary floor plan of the office warehouse building that is to be proposed later. So they're indicating the need for that 13,600 square foot building, which that would have that permitted office warehouse use. They're proposing the need for the seven overhead doors and the full review of that would be evaluated with the building permit application following any land use approval. So shown here, the exterior materials of the building kind of shown with the landscaping elevations as well as kind of a more, you know, black and white line items as well. So the materials that are proposed are an aggregate kind of concrete precast panels, which would be permitted under the city's architectural materials ordinance. They do have a more decorative entrance to the building showing kind of a metal canopy overhead with their, their signage band as well. So shown here, there is an element of tree removal on the site that needs to be reevaluated since it wasn't fully completed from that approval from almost 10 years ago. So there will be a tree removal permit that will be required later and there will be, with the landscaping that we would review, any reforestation that's needed. So they have provided in their packet kind of some information about what that calculations would be and that's going to be looked at kind of more in-depth by staff with a tree removal permit, which would be required before anything is removed on the site. As for their overall installation of landscaping, there are no issues with what is proposed. You know, they have a number of new plantings installed on the southern property line, which they do share with another similar, or another use, another building. And then new ornamental and other kind of tree plantings along the perimeter of the site, which would be outside of their screening fence. So it would be what would be viewed from the public road. So shown here, they did provide some sightlines from the adjoining streets to the property because it is on all three sides by streets. And so there will be, because of the, some of the trailers, so they're not necessarily all with the BIFs portable restrooms of what you would may traditionally think of. Some of them are those trailers that go out to events that can accommodate kind of a larger kind of need for events. And so, so those, similar to how we've seen parking-related conditional use permits, it's similar to a vehicle parking. It would be viewed beyond the height of fence just due to the nature of the vehicle itself. And so some staff considerations here. So the proposed outdoor storage and fencing materials are conditional use in B4 Highway Commercial District. So the use itself of the office warehouse is considered to be permitted and then the use of the outdoor storage is permitted with the conditions allowable to be applied through this process. And we would review that. Also, just some notable things. So related to the, the site itself, there's a new multi-use trail along Dupont Avenue that's in a planning stage with the city and is proposed in front of the site. So the applicant has worked with engineering just to accommodate that they would have a driveway apron that approaches the site, of course, which would be in relation to the trail location. So there is going to be some coordination during construction of these two projects, which would likely happen around the same time. Traffic to the site, minor increase anticipated and the stormwater management is accommodated by connecting it and utilizing an existing regional pond. So there is no new infrastructure that we sometimes see with new development applications. I'll go back to that. So related to the gateway design guidelines, primarily in this area, the gateway design guidelines offer a vision through the Comprehensive Plan and through an adopted section that's kind of an addendum to our city code, which talks about the city's need for maintaining that buffer between our streets and our newer lighter industrial, possibly mixed use or technical campus areas. So this property itself, when reviewed from the gateway design guidelines, we're not looking for to accomplish that goal specifically on this property, although there is that buffer that's maintained and a lot of landscaping that's provided. But the area as a whole, which we're seeing kind of some new redevelopment in that maintains that lighter industrial and business focused kind of an aspect in compliance with the goals of that section of the Comprehensive Plan. So overall, with our recommendation this evening, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the CUP for the outdoor storage lot and to allow the slats within chain link fencing. So I do want to note that there are eight conditions within the report. So the first is that city engineer approval will be required to allow the new driveway access to be wider than 24 feet of the property line. This is something that the city engineer has reviewed and the ordinance states that it is their discretionary approval on the plans when they come in for permit. As mentioned, a tree removal permit will be required prior to any work to remove those being conducted on the site. And again, that condition related to the landscaping plan where there will be a staff administrative review to verify that the building permit landscaping plan does meet the zoning ordinance. Some of the general conditions that we see with a lot of our development applications, that ground mounted and rooftop mechanical equipment be 100% screened pursuant to the zoning ordinance, that a permanent signed permit be acquired prior to installation of any exterior signage, and that exterior lighting should be downcast and shielded on faces. And there is also the requirement that we've seen with some of our outdoor storage lots lately, that exterior light poles cannot exceed the height of the building. And then the final condition, that on the engineering review memo dated April 25th, that any outstanding comments be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer prior to building permit issuance. So again, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit this evening. And this is a public hearing and I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. And we also have Ms. Lloyd from, for the city engineering department here. And I'm going to ask commissioners, any questions for city staff? Commissioner Braddock?
Can you help me understand the relationship between the IUP soil remediation and then this project, I guess? How does that impact one another?
So for the original approval for the soil remediation, there's very little impact on this proposal going forward. Any grading that the applicant may do to prepare for their specific development approval or their development plans will be what they need in order to accomplish, you know, their building's scope and layout. The prior approval is, I can't remember the exact date, but it is kind of getting to the point where it, from the previous property owner and it would have lapsed. So it was related to stockpiling as they do some of that cleanup work. And that's something which is not going to be part of this proposal because they are, they are developing it. It's not that they are going to spend that long period of time doing the cleaning where they would just continue to be the soil stockpiling for the remediation purposes. Hope that answers.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Well, with that, I'd like to ask the, I'm assuming the last two people here are the applicants.
I was wondering when we should.
Would you, would you like to come to the podium, speak a little bit about the business and what we're, please? I still need to name and address, so if you don't mind.
Derek Pauling, you want our address that we're currently at as a business?
Your home address, yes.
Oh, home address.
Yep.
9260 River Rock Drive North, Channas, Minnesota. Our existing business is BIFs Incorporated. And Heather and I, Heather couldn't be here tonight, but she's watching online and would be available. Our dad started our business in 1986 and, you know, he unfortunately passed away in 2017 of Alzheimer's. So in listening to the group home thing, it was, kind of hit a note with me. But we actually started out in Burnsville many, many years ago. We're on 144 West, no, 1901 West, 1, 1901 West 144th Street, which is right next to Ames. So that's where I grew up, working in the business. And so it's kind of cool that we just built a facility in Shakopee with Shaw. And, you know, that was just a couple of years ago. Now we're starting to expand with the luxury trailers and we were still having to lease space in Shakopee elsewhere for like seasonal storage in the winter. And so this property came up like a perfect opportunity for us to be able to accommodate, not only eliminating the rent, but then able to expand that luxury trailer division and just get some space because we don't have enough space in Shakopee. So my sister and I are, my sister's 51% owner. I am 49% owner. So we're a woman-owned business. Let's see, I mean, we set construction, special events, parks and recreation, schools, luxury trailers, and then like the non-construction. So anything that has like food warehouses or distribution centers or places where they have, you know, lots of trucks coming in and out, where we would put a BIF so they don't have to use the inside of the building. That's kind of, you know, we pump, it's kind of fascinating. Like we were looking at the numbers and things and we do about 375,000 pumps per year in the metro area, which generates like two and a half or three million gallons of waste that we collect from those that don't have permanent facilities to use in the Twin Cities. And all that gets dumped at wastewater treatment plant in Shakopee. So if you think of our impact on the Twin Cities and how like we are able to allow everybody to use the bathroom when they don't have one, it's pretty, pretty cool. So that's BIFs.
I appreciate you dubbed it in Shakopee.
Well, that wastewater treatment plant has like won tons of awards and it happens to be right across the street from where we built in Shakopee, which was wise. We can route everybody there, things like that. So yeah, it's, I mean, most of the Twin Cities' waste gets dumped at that Blue Lake wastewater treatment plant. And unfortunately, I'll tell you that a lot of it gets recycled back into drinking water, amazingly enough, so.
Probably could have lived without that comment.
I'm kidding, I'm just giving you a hard time. But it's fascinating, you know, we do a lot of, you know, we found out we were really an essential business when the pandemic hit because although we had no events, everybody was like, oh my gosh, we need more facilities and places for people to go. And so like it's just kind of evolved from there. And we actually got busier during the pandemic because of all the needs. We were serving nursing homes, facilities that, you know, needed sink and hand washing and it just kept, things like that. So it's been kind of cool, so.
You're always a relief to see when we're out on, you know, at a festival or something of those lines.
Yep.
Your, your business is very much appreciated.
Thank you. It's not easy.
Does anybody have a question for the applicant while he's up here? Commissioner Timmerman?
I just have a couple of comments. I think the city would be lucky to welcome you back. I think that, you know, I grew up in a neighboring city and your dad created a business that I thought was a worldwide name. And it wasn't until I got older in my life and started talking to my friends in other areas about Biffy's and they looked at me like, what are you talking about? So I think, I mean, you've heard every joke in the world, I'm sure. And I, I think that, you know, there's none here other than it's awesome that you want to come back to Burnsville. I think that this is a cool project. I think it's a good space. We've seen a little bit more development in this area over the last several weeks even, which is great because it's an underutilized area, especially dealing with the overhead lines and.
Yep, yep.
Some challenging properties, so.
Yeah, for sure. What makes it like kind of perfect for us because, you know, Excel's working with us on that variance and they've given us verbal approval, which it might take a long time to get the official. But yeah, we're really excited too because we can work around the power lines and we can work with Excel if they have to get in there. It was nice that there's central ponding for us. We get more space. So there's been a lot of positive things. And we already knew the Astelfords from before because we had looked at that prior to select in Shakopee.
Sure.
Now we need more space, so.
That's a good problem. But yeah, I mean, keep expanding your business so when I go visit my sister in Florida and talk about Biffy's with her, can I call them Biffy's or is that?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I heard you said Biffy's, so.
I didn't know if that was okay. But yeah, I don't want to be laughed at for them not knowing what I'm talking about. And so let's get your name out to Florida.
Yes.
Any other comments, commissioners, questions? Well, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up that public hearing at 7:48. The crowd isn't too big anymore, however, it is a public hearing. And if there's anybody on Zoom who wants to speak to this issue, they can go ahead and let the moderator know. And the moderator just let me know that there's nobody on Zoom. At 7:49, I'm going to close that public hearing. With that, I am going to turn it back over to commissioners for any comments, questions, and concerns. Again, I'm going to reiterate what Commissioner Timmerman said. Thank you for coming back to Burnsville. At first I was a little bit concerned about the location thinking, well, can they see it from the freeway? Is that going to be Burnsville's big, you know, what people are? And it is a great location for that. It is hidden behind the trees and I really enjoy the, not enjoy, I really appreciate the fact that you're going to grow the trees around the fencing. As much as we appreciate you when we need you, it's, it's not a great sight to see coming into a city, obviously. No offense. But with that, I would be looking for a motion then from Commissioner Braddock.
All right, I'm going to motion that the planning commission recommend the, that we recommend to the city council approval of the conditional use permit for outdoor storage of BIFs, portable restrooms, and to allow slats within chain link fencing for the construction of a new outdoor storage lot in 13,600 square foot office slash warehouse building located at 12547 Dupont Avenue South, subject to the following eight conditions.
Perfect. The motion's been made, but Commissioner Braddock, do I have a second? Commissioner Anderson?
I'll second that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. All in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, you will be on the consent agenda, June 7th at 5:30 in these very chambers. City council will push you on through.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks. Great business.
And with that, it moved to number five on our agenda. That is updates. Any updates, commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to let Commissioner, Ms. Madden get to her chair. Any updates now?
Just a couple. So we do have on the June 7th city council meeting, just so that you know, right now we have at least tentatively scheduled, there will be an abbreviated plat public hearing at the city council. So when, when the city gets a plat application that is for, I believe it's less than six lots and they all meet city code requirements, whether that's a division or kind of an addition of lots, it can go through the abbreviated plat process, which is identical to the preliminary and final plat process, but the public hearing is held at the city council, so there's only one meeting. So instead of this plat being reviewed by the planning commission, it will be at the city council. You can watch it if you would like, but it is just a subdivision of one residential lot into two residential lots. So.
On paper and I was curious.
Yes. So that will be to hold on the June 7th meeting. And then your next planning commission meeting will be June 13th, I think.
Great.
And no other updates.
No other updates. Well, commissioners, there is no other updates. Number six on the agenda is the adjournment. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Anderson?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. The motion's been made, but Commissioner Anderson, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Braddock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for joining us tonight and have a good night.